Record in progress.
Call of being order. Roll the call.
Smith.
Leatherlin.
Clark.
Welcome.
What? Approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I make the motion we approve the minutes of the September.
I second the motion.
Motion made second, any counsel discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion period. Claims. New sheet in front of you.
There is one that's not printed, it's written on the very bottom, because I didn't want to rewrite that whole sheet over again. And I did it at the last minute, I found that it was a... We had someone that gave us an unemployment pension funds check. Our ACH, who are auto portal. So it comes, it bounces back and we get charged fifteen dollars, so... That's what that is on the bottom, but it's not in a printed section. Said everything all the way down.
Do you have a library of the site project?
No.
Well, what's, what was the amount?
Six hundred and seventy-three eighty-nine.
So it's Visa slash library.
No, that's there, there, there for my card, that's the library's credit card.
And just so the public knows, there's been a rumor going around. When you guys are approving claims, they've already been paid. I want to see, here's all the checks and nothing signed, they're all still here. Nothing gets sent from council approves them. That was one of the rumors that got on the street here this last couple of weeks is that we pay all the bills and you guys are looking at nothing, all the checks are right here, so, and all bills, so... And they are every month, we're seeing it from these. Anytime you have a question about any of them, like a poll.
Is that burial tape?
Yes, sir.
So will we bury any claims we bury?
You're not talking bodies.
It's aluminum tape you put down, so when you're digging, you pull the tape up long.
Okay, okay, just, just making sure that we're, you know, I mean, I don't want to add to the rumors of the hot stuff over there. I've just not seen that one on a claim yet.
Just thought I'd make it interesting.
It's Halloween, I know. All of that then.
Yeah.
Alright, well, see, we do actually read these.
Okay, so on packet one, there was a Morrison Marley for...
Eleven thousand dollars.
One thousand one hundred and thirty-five.
That's on page two of the new one.
Okay.
And that's for engineering of the Lagoon project.
Oh yeah, I see it.
And then down below, that'll be the final thing, or the final, because we have some more. Still, eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine on the finishing mea board.
And we're still setting to deal with extra for them.
So what we did is, yeah, so, like, not about ideas as you ask, so, we saw the extra money. So what the engineer suggested is for the town to buy a better sewer camera, one on the head, can, he can look up lines and do some...
Which we talked about before, right?
Um, so we're still waiting for ARPA to get back to us, which they did today, with a form they want the engineer to fill out before they approve it, so... That's where we're at on that.
Will they approve the bids?
She just sent that to him, like, at four o'clock today, so...
Then they approved the bids, or how many, no?
No, well, they wanted me to fill out a form, she thought they probably would. They had a form, she sent me a form at four o'clock, he has to fill it out, and then they will go back, so we'll...
I make the motion we accept the claims.
I second that, will you pay your bills?
Motion made second, any counsel discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Financial reports, those, you guys might have seen, they go all the way back to June, because there was a little hiccup in June, when we hit final budget. Seventy cent discrepancy popped up, so I had to go back and read June's financials, so... So you have June, July, August, and September in front of you.
Oh, I had highlighted, I know.
I know, I was gonna say, where's the highlight?
I reprinted it, I was trying to make a figure. I can tell you where it is, though, I can tell you very easily, if you compare this June one to the one you already received, online, number, though, towards the bottom, it was two hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Previously, it was two hundred and twenty-one dollars and a different amount of cents. And then the same thing online.
The sewer, uh...
Sewer repair.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, correct, and then if you go up about ten more, um, two lines above the water renovation, the gray one, two lines above that, that two hundred and twenty-five thirty-eight is also interest on one of our CDs. And that one was also just a matter of cents. And it was...
And that's why you had to reprint.
So I had to reprint the whole thing.
Okay.
And I, I think it's on the list, but I actually have the, the paper that shows that. But what happened was, when I did it originally, I got the report that said, "This is your interest," but the interest doesn't run all the way to the end of the month. So then the next month, you get the next one of next month, it covers a couple of days of the previous month. But because they had to end it at the end of, um, June, there was a secondary, um, interest payment. Yeah, I actually had it in an email to her, because I emailed her to ask her what was going on.
I make the motion we accept the financials for June, for June, July, August, and September.
Made second, any counsel discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports, um, the mayor's on a report, and they talk about the ARPA money that we talked about before. Uh, our engineer just got the stuff from ARPA at, like, four this afternoon, to fill out, to see if they'll go ahead and purchase that, or allow them to purchase that camera system, uh, for sewer camera. Also, starting a couple of months ago, and, and I didn't really hear about it until recently, the county is working on a community wildfire protection plan. So, I reached out, it's being done by an engineering firm, I reached out to them, told them they need to start involving Hot Springs, since we're part of Sanders County too.
Are we?
Yeah, so, uh, so what they did is, I, I, well, I think I've reached out to Sam and the tribes, uh, because we are a part of the county. So, uh, with that, there's another meeting coming up, I think in November, but also, one of the big things I pushed for is they didn't want to do a public meeting here, and that is now on the schedule, so they will be doing a public meeting here for the public to come, uh, for them to explain what the, uh, the plan is, what they're looking at, and that's, it's actually, like, in the next summer before its final, like, so, I mean, it'll be fairly early in the planning stages, the public meeting will be here, so...
Can councilway notify when the next meeting is in November, we'd like to attend?
Uh, yeah. I'll, I'll, let me, there's state with, how they do this, they call them stakeholders, there's certain people they invite, um, so I don't know if the public can go, I guess.
Well, I don't know, I guess as a council member, what do you consider public?
Well, it's mainly like, uh, forest service, uh, fire people, I think when I went through the stakeholder thing, it was all fire people, but I guess you'd go get a fire person, um, so you can join the fire department, and get you through some training and...
I would use the community institute, and...
Yeah, I know.
I think we had, I mean, really, uh, how would people escape, would we have one way in, one way out of town, and so, I think it would be interesting.
Well, those are some of the things, at the last, some of the last stuff the county did, actually, before you're on the council, I actually advised the council not to sign this stuff, because they didn't involve Hot Springs at all, you know, it was a countywide plan, and Hot Springs wasn't it at all, that's why I advised the, uh, the engineering firm on this, that, uh, advised my council not to sign up on the plan, unless Hot Springs was part of the plan, so, um, so yeah, I'll, I'll just, uh, forward you, or hit you the link, I'm not sure, either way, I'll look.
Alright, thank you.
Take care of that, so you can see, um, some of them were on, like, teams meeting, and somewhere in person, I mean, I'll just sit between you and figure that out, so... Uh, but anyway, they will be doing one in town, we'll advertise it, uh, whether we do it jointly, or the town council meeting, might be just a little long, or a separate meeting, but we'll figure something out, uh, here coming up. And also, uh, the tribal fire management will be involved, and tribal ADS, uh, Marshawn? I think that's her name, the new lady, anyways, I talked to her last night, so, and she actually hasn't got any notification from me, so, forwarding stuff to her, so she's a little more involved with that, with the county, so, um... So a lot of other little, just little things, cleaning up, getting ready to go, uh, helping the public works a little bit, uh, they've been doing the street work, stormwater, they've been cleaning ditches, um, we, actually, in some of the ditch work we were doing, we actually found some culverts that were completely buried in here, I couldn't even see the end of them, uh, Arley and First Door was one of them, uh, they got those cleaned out, um, they're doing some, and you can see down there on the corner of Arley and, and First, and First and Second, the landlord there is doing that, filling in the work and stuff, they came to the council about, that's where we found a culvert, stuff in there that was buried for years, so those are all cleaned out, ready to go. Uh, also, the water department has been super busy this last month with digging projects, uh, they did four water sewer removals, uh, they're doing a water relocate, actually, a water line years ago, and actually, the city redid it, I don't know why, but they put a water line through someone else's property. Through the middle, I mean, not even, not even close, it's just through the middle, so, uh, we're rerouting that, and getting it in the city right away, going to the person's house for, I don't know, we know the citizen, that, that was not their responsibility, it's just, uh, the property changes, the ownership, and the new owners are like, "Why is this water leaking both in the middle of a property?" so... So they're doing that, and, uh, some other properties have been bought, so they're doing some water project, uh, on the hill, actually on North Road, um, they're installing some new services up there, so, uh, they've been really busy with all that. Getting ready for winter, I think it's because, uh, their first load of salt sand mix came in today, I believe, so, they're ready, hopefully it snows quickly. Fire department, we've had multiple calls, it hasn't slowed down, of course, we've had quite a bit with, uh, uh, car crashes, animal strikes, and fires, we actually, um, still some wildland fires here this last, uh, couple of weeks ago, uh, I think we're probably pretty much done with that. Uh, I had a meeting with, uh, the tribes last night, fire management, and they said it was actually, probably one of the first times ever, the majority of the fire starts were all, uh, like, nature. They said man clouds. Normally man clouds is way hotter this year, uh, and the largest fires were, uh, over here, the largest was the Blue Ranch Fire, uh, six hundred and eighty, and then the, uh, the train fire, Milemark, uh, Milemark ninety-one fire, was the second fire, so, uh, the largest fires were in our district, even so, it was a busy year for us, but we got through it well, with the training we do with them, and the work we do with them. Working together more and more and more, so it makes it so much easier when we go on these fire calls, we know what channels to use, we know who to talk to, we know what their organization plans are, what equipment we have available, it worked out really well this year, uh, Ron and crew over there, you know, looking out, Ron and Ron were great, so, pretty much to work with, so... That was pretty much this last month, police department?
For us, we had the court bailiff, attended the DUI task force quarterly meeting, eleven citations for arrests, felony domestic items, and the other side, they didn't release, uh, vicious dog psych, and no dog license. Uh, when I came on last year, I was asked to take another look at the Heather Tiff case, so, at the time, I was by myself, um, we hired Justin, Justin got in the academy, and then information came about, so I reached out to the DOJ, and they've, uh, as you know, or may have heard, they were in town, and the investigation is, is, uh, being looked at again, so, just wanted to advise the public on that. And then, um, as you know, we've had a lot of deer that have been found dead, so, I reached out to our law enforcement partners, uh, the tribal game horns, and so he's gonna give an update.
Thank you. So, I'm Brandon Katur, tropical fishing game, I have the kind of part, no, I'm also present today, as the chief told you, um, as most of you probably are well aware, we've had a significant die-off of the whitetail deer here in town. I think, beginning of the month of September, got my first call from the chief, teamed up, and joined me investigating a couple of them, and then since then, up till now, we've had a total that has surpassed a hundred total deer, it is exclusive.
In Hot Springs?
In Hot Springs.
Over a hundred?
Over a hundred.
Oh my god.
Okay, um, of the first few that we did investigate, um, I think three of those were definite trauma that were roadkill, we eliminated that immediately, it's like, "He's a roadkill," didn't think much of it, as the time progressed, we started picking them up, no obvious signs of trauma, blunt trauma, bullet injury, anything like that. And then, we suspected EHD, Epizootic Hemorrhagic Disease, um, may or may not have heard about it, it's very similar to blue tongue, they're both of the same family disease, they act very similar, they're hemorrhagic in nature, um, actually, Noah and I investigated one, Camus Prairie, the first one we dealt with, was before chief and I teamed up, and we had went out to Camus Prairie, and said, "Hey, we're looking at it, it looked like EHD," got some samples, sent them to biology, and they let us go. The plains has been having an outbreak, same thing, um, to date, I know plains, Camus Prairie, um, obviously, this is the hotbed, this is of all the areas, this is where the most have died, we're getting it over into urban flats, uh, even Ronan, some of the areas on the, the east side of the reservation as well, over in Lake County. The good news is with it, if you're not familiar with how these diseases work, there's no human risk, there's no risk of cross contamination, it's exclusive to the animal, when it dies, the disease dies in the animal with it. Even if you're to consume an animal that had it, there's no risk of human consumption, it's caused by the biting mites, um, most of us know them as nooseums, I've heard of them, they act very similar to mosquitoes, they bite them, they inject with anticoagulant, they get bit a thousand times, causes basically the disease, they turn the humans to death. Of the deer that we've looked at, like I said, over a hundred, some of those weren't, um, EHD, and they were the roadkill, zero of the deer that we picked up and investigated, whether it was joint with the chief, with Hot Springs Police, or any other waters, none of them had had any bullet in them, they weren't poached, none of them were suspected of being poisoned, so, other than the vehicle, trauma, and deaths, they've all been pretty natural in their cause of death, just that hemorrhagic disease. So I'm fortunate to see a die-off like this, it does happen from time to time, about a decade ago, we had a small die-off, wasn't anything near this, but as most of you are well aware, we did have an overly hot summer, had off and on, uh, precipitation throughout the summer, so it was kind of the perfect storm to lead into this, and then we, we haven't gotten cold enough, and that's ultimately what's gotta happen for the die-off to start, you just gotta have a couple consecutive days of below freezing, the insects die off, and the deer are fine, and the disease dies off with them.
So are there certain parts of town, I live over on Second Avenue, and the AS Street, and all my deer that are around me are all fine, and people who come to my house are like, "How come your deer look so healthy over here?" so is it certain parts of towns we're seeing it forming? It's awesome for town, I mean, I haven't seen any dead deer.
If I were to just think of the ones that we've picked up, so I think between us, we're, we're probably close to fifty to get.
You said it's second south?
Yeah, Second Avenue South and Aeneas, and that, and I, the woods are right behind me in that field, and I haven't seen any dead deer.
We picked up like that, at least.
Really?
Five to seven of them, just north of your house.
Okay, in the woods, or?
Just north of your, so, just, it makes it pretty odd.
And the number could be far beyond one hundred, because outside city limits, when, I mean, monocles have called in, the smell of decaying animal or whatnot, we're just...
So is there any symptoms that you see before they die, I mean, is there anything that alerts they're ill?
So, where the mites get in, they get into the pits of the animal, and so you'll see them itching a lot, or muscling, trying to get it out, so then you know, hey, they probably got, got a lot of them off.
How about that sneezing? I mean, some...
Toward, toward the end, because, because it is hemorrhagic in, in nature, so, basically, you're, you're internally bleeding to death, so your lungs, and so then you see some of the phlegm in the mouth, phlegm in the nose, kind of pink, so you will, you will see that.
So the sneezing, okay, I've seen that.
So...
Aw, man.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh, aside from the heat, uh, some of the, the little creeks that ran, are, would access to water, or lack of access to water also contribute, something like that?
No, and, and truthfully, once the animals are, are close to, to dying, they actually seep water, similar to when they're injured, they seep water, that's their natural biomechanism, it's cooler, it's gonna cause the, the trauma to be less, it's gonna be a trauma, more or less, so, as I say, it's not a lack of water, they're definitely well fed, well hydrated, it just, it's, it's natural, it really is, it's natural in the tree, so... Uh, if there's no further questions this time, I know you guys had to push along through the agenda, I'll be here for when the public comment opens up, so if there are other questions, happy to field them, I'm sure there are time questions, yes, sir.
Uh, just, we've seen a few deer that have some kind of horrendous, like, tumors going on, is that related?
No, so you do have that doe that has a massive hematoma.
Here's the one.
Okay, well, we saw the one, and last week, probably about the size of a football, and it's, it's fluid-like, we didn't know at first if it's, you know, like, benign tumor, or if it was packed fluid, we saw it pretty much every day over the last week, and it's growing, it's got up under her tricep, and if she were to smeg it, it might just pull out, and she'd be okay, she's not in any, she's not a risk, she's not looking like she's too labored, so we're letting her be, ultimately, it may be fatal for her, she may have to be put down, um, but, with the die-off of the deer, she's one of the healthiest looking does around, minus the hematoma, so... And then you might see the DPD, you might see some of the ones with the wounds and stuff, that's all natural, no risk, peaceful as well. But again, I'll be here through the grace of this, if you have any questions at the end, whether it's for the group or individually, it's happy to field them, so, alright?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, that was, just, Eric was pretty short there, one of the things that, uh, he did do is looking into a lot of investigations and stuff, that, um, some of the cases that, uh, we talked about that, some of the other meetings, some of those cases that were left over the last couple of years before, before Eric, uh, came on, just weren't finished up, finalized, so him and Sean did a lot of that. One of the big ones that he kept getting asked, and asked, and asked, is the disappearance of Heather Tiff, and, so that case has been brought back to light, Eric brought in, uh, special investigators from the state, have been in town multiple times, that's their, that's what they do statewide, is that's they're working on, that stuff too, uh, which they're doing, and we don't really know where all that's at, but, but things are being worked on, and, and some of things tonight is, uh, all over here, we're missing one reserve, it's all there.
No, Nate's on his way.
Nate's on his way, so anyways, they're doing some training, joint training tonight, so we have two, our reserves, Benjamin Woods, and Nate is on his way, and then that's why the other three officers are here, they're doing some joint training here tonight, so that's why they're all with us.
I had a question, and, um, I'm not on that hotline group, but all the information that's been coming out about Sean, I know that there had been some information before he was hired, and it might just be a personnel issue, I'm guessing people have mentioned it, I had several, if the Grange brought it up to me.
It's the same stuff we all seen before, it's the same stuff we were presented before hire.
Okay, well, I didn't remember some of it, and she, the person had...
Well, AI drafted some of that stuff too, so some of that stuff isn't quite accurate.
Okay, and I, I'm just, you know, and people start asking me about it, and I have to be able to say, "I brought it up," and I don't know.
Yeah, you were, you were showing all of the court documents.
So, okay, even about the theft and the other ones, okay, I didn't remember the sexual stuff.
The, the post, uh, post stuff and all that, of course, they, they removed your script, like, we investigated, and that was given back to him, though, funny, he was found, uh, there was nothing grown, uh, a couple, three years ago, almost three years ago now, so...
Well, I can mention it, because I thought, I knew he was posted on.
Yeah, so all that stuff was already, so, for the public to know all that stuff that was put out there on the internet here recently, um, we knew all that stuff prior to hire, council was advised of all of it, when we looked at all that stuff prior to hire, so...
Well, council wasn't, we didn't get to see anything.
Well, I didn't get to see it first, yeah, so, uh, but that was all looked at, and, and of course, uh, the stuff that was there, uh, you know, is the justice system, it was, uh, acquitted of everything, there's nothing, there's nothing there, because a post-certified police officer has been for years, so, it's, uh, and then one of the things Sean has done for us, like I said, all those cases that we got left, um, that was the big thing Sean, when he first come on, did for us, is followed up on sixty-some cases that have been closed, um, you know, so, he's been a great asset to us, he's, uh, on the, on the computer side, uh, his knowledge of legal system and all, that's been a great asset on that side of the point, he's also leading the reserve program right now, we actually have three reserves, four, four reserves, um, so, you know, they're training all the time, and, and there's a reserve program that all the state has, some strict guidelines in the reserve program, they have certain training and stuff, they only work with an officer, so lots of things going on there too, so, um, it's getting better and better and better, there's always some hiccups, there are always things going on, there's always things to be worked on and made better too, and we know that, and as those things come to light, we work on them, and they get better, so...
Thank you.
Moving on, clerk?
Um, I don't, I don't think, I, I do have something, um, the November meeting, we didn't propose the agenda to reschedule it for the election, I assume we're just fine, gonna have it in November, in December, um, will not be here, so, want to know if you guys want to schedule the December meeting for a different time, I'll put it on the next agenda.
So you did say reschedule it in November?
I did not reschedule the November meeting, but...
I said not to, because of mail-in ballots, I didn't think it mattered.
Yeah, it's mail-in ballots, so that's why, and then, but in December, um...
It's early in the month, and then...
It's like on the, I gotta see, it's on the second.
Second.
And I won't be here. So, I will put it on the November agenda, if you guys want me to put on the November agenda to reschedule it.
Till the ninth, till the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. That all? Okay, Starla?
Okay, services to the public, knitwear is canceled till the month of October, paper crafts is, uh, will be on Saturdays, materials are provided, the book discussion group will discuss their last book for this year, Outlander by Diana Gavallen, October twenty-third, Books in Search of Kids is next scheduled to be at the Lone Pine Bazaar, uh, contact the library director if you would like to drop by the library, pick up books from Books in Search of Kids. Uh, collector, collections, the book... Collector, collections, the book sale will be ongoing, which usually we have a book sale in the summer and then in the winter, but we've got a donation of shelves. And so the book sale is gonna be ongoing now. And it looks nice, and it's not a typical book now. We will begin reading the collection at the end of October and the beginning of November. Technology, we have a color printer back up and running, still hooking up some bugs and glitches, but for the most part, the computer shell is functioning correctly. General administrative business, the town court included the library's annual report for past year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and the council packets. The press in Hot Springs Town County Library prepares an annual report according to the Library bylaws, Articles Six, Section One, which is a report of the library's conditions and operations to the Hot Springs Town Council and the Satters County Commissioners. If there's anything on that report, or not on that report, please let me know, because I don't mind adding information if there's something more that you want to know. The fall fundraiser is October eighteenth. The Make-A-N-Offers sale will start at nine AM and eight at four. And we do taco salads and tacos, starting at ten thirty AM. The letterboard meet next Wednesday, the fifteenth to five AM for the monthly meeting. Stats are still up. Everything is going well down there at the moment, so.
Where's the siding project for the spirit?
I have had no word on that yet.
Okay. So are you gonna try and do it the winter, or is he gonna wait?
I don't know, he had a death in the family, and I, that's the last I heard, he hadn't gotten back, he's dead.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Starla. Zoning compliance, this one has just had some, just working on some projects the council already approved, just verifying they're being done as per council request. Did have, of course, your, the other one is the fence that's in your packet, we'll talk about that later. And then we did have some property PIN issues. Back to before you build, buying your PINs, know that you're on your property. We had a whole packet put together to bring to you tonight. An individual built his house, he lives on the edge of city limits, but he built his house a couple feet out of town.
On someone else's property.
So by, because his house is in city limits, the property he buys, he's gonna have to buy it now from the neighbor, that has to be annexed in, because it's not in city limits, it's just, it's a giant mess, so.
And you can't have government lines dividing a piece of the property.
So, so the surveyor's working on, we thought we had it already, at one point there were going to annex like four acres into town, they decided, no, they're gonna do something different. So the surveyor's working on, although it'll probably be at the next meeting, probably, we'll have that and stuff. So that was kind of a lot of back and forth, back and forth, and figuring things out, and how to fix that, so. Still, that's a very big thing. If you have to pay for a survey, pay for it. It's just, this lucked out, this guy had already been talking to the other guy about buying the property down the road, five or six years, now he just has to do it right. So, there's just some of those things that came up, so there, that's all. It's, that's all we're going to the point, and so. Parks Direct?
Don't have any favor to report.
Okay. Moving on to new business, first item on new business, attorney contract pay rate. The attorney, we would have paid a thousand dollars a month too. We've been talking with other towns, discussing with other agencies, and for the amount of work they have to put in, we're one of the lowest ones around, and we probably should talk about this a couple months later, budget time, but it just come to our attention more recently. We're looking at some different numbers, and.
Lauren called me, he is stepping down. He doesn't want to be an attorney anymore, he wants to build houses. He's gonna stay with the town until he is, he's already stepped down from Plains, he's already stepped down from St. Ignatius. He's been solely, and he was keeping Hot Springs because he really liked us. But he's decided, he just, his heart, he said, "I'm doing this because it's better for you guys, my heart's not in it, I'm not doing any time I'm supposed to, and I'd rather you guys have someone that will do a good job for you." And so he is stepping down, he was trying to give us some more of his time. And him and the judge are not seeing eye to eye on some things, so he would just assume we find someone sooner than later. And as we started talking to people and looking at our options, it's very clear that if we're going to get somebody, that we're going to have to raise it, even if it's just a, you know, a few hundred dollars a month, to meet that kind of. Like Plains, I was told pays twenty-five hundred a month, but they have more court dates than we do, and more people.
Just like, like St. Ignatius is kind of similar account to us, about fifteen hundred.
Yeah, and so that's kind of what I was thinking, is if we could just bring it up a little bit, and might make it to be advertised a little more.
So we have not, we've not gotten official, we don't have paperwork from Lauren, so he is, that's just, told us that. He's not officially done it, and like you said, he'll stay on and take care of cases until another attorney is up to speed, so. So we'll have to, if he does give us the paperwork, we'll make it official, and we'll have to advertise it.
Are there other towns that are similar our size, besides St. Ignatius, that we can kind of get a little?
Yeah, when you, yeah, it's kind of, everyone pays way more, even Plains is twenty-five hundred as low. You know, that's, for an attorney, you know, that's.
They've been looking for months, and are not finding one, Plains?
Yeah. And then they even talked of, you know, they found an attorney that'll do a little bit of the prosecution stuff, but he doesn't want to deal with anything of the town business, so. So now they're looking at hiring two attorneys, one they'll do a deal with the town business, one to deal with the court, so. They're probably gonna be paying, they're probably gonna be paying double that, you know, just to have two attorneys, so. And that's kind of how it kind of has been going in the bigger places anyways. I was just at a meeting last night, the Lake County Commissioners were there, the Lake County Commissioners now, a personal attorney that just deals commissioner stuff. And then the, you know, the Lake County Attorney's Office deals with everything else.
Well, civil and criminal are completely different areas of law.
Yeah, and they, and that was, actually they had their attorney there talking to the fire districts about some stuff, so.
So here's this, so how often do we use an attorney for civil?
So, for the town?
Yeah.
So all of our.
And that kind of stuff.
Organ's work, all of our contracts go through him.
Right.
Everything, so, so really, on the town side, it's actually very little for the town government side. Because it's only contracts, it's, if we have any labor questions, if it's anything. On the organ's side, he looks at those, of course.
Policies.
Yeah, yeah, policy or procedure changes go through him. So really, it's, it's not a lot of work for the town on this side, because we don't change a lot of that stuff. We already kind of got it done, or just going along with it. On the court side, then, is where it's pretty constant. When people get arrested, they have to involve, you know, you have to tell me something, those higher crime things have to involve, there's search warrants. So they're involved way more, so the more law enforcement is doing, the more, the more the lawyers are doing too, so. And that's, and then lawyers just killing them, they have to work twice a month, but still, there's just a lot of other things going on, so.
So here's a thought, is, you know, because I'm guessing Plains is similar, that not a lot of their work is civil, it's mostly the criminal. And it is two different areas of law, of getting together with the other towns and finding somebody who's similarly trained, who will take that piece, and then, so you have more on my, the criminal part.
And we've talked to, I've talked to Plains, Thompson Falls, both, about, you know, when you find an attorney, why don't we all go together on it, that way the attorney's getting, doing the same kind of work through three towns, but then making enough money it makes it worthwhile to be doing that type of work. Because fifteen hundred dollars is nothing for an attorney.
Plains may have someone who's going to do part of their stuff for them, and has no interest in doing anything in any other town.
Well, and I know the one.
So there's that too, right, yeah.
I know the one attorney that Plains is looking at, and would be theirs, he will, he refuses to do hot springs.
There's a lot of attorneys that manage the law school, but he works.
Well, and he was the attorney for, and the backstory on that is, he was years ago, twenty-five, thirty, maybe even thirty years ago, he was the town attorney for years. He advised the council not to do something, and the council did it anyways, and got him in trouble, and.
He's still back.
Never come back again. So. So I'd say it's the council raise, just for the advertising purposes, just to give a number, that's a little more appealing out there, it'd be fifteen hundred a month, would be what I'd recommend.
Were you changing the ninety dollars per hour?
No.
No, for sure.
Okay, for advertising purposes.
Kind of for advertising purposes, who we get, that's gonna be the first thing they're gonna ask, at least that base. And Nate is here.
Yeah, contracts, legal, review calls, because of her dad, and.
That's one of the things Lauren never really looked at, he never, I don't think we ever need extra charges, penalty fee, and mileage. Drive it here, that was more.
When he started, if there was a mileage, well, a few years ago, when it was, it was changed to, the contract was rewritten, so it didn't have mileage in it, and it increased the flat rate. That was a few years ago.
Will I make a motion for advertising purposes for another attorney that we raise the base rate to fifteen hundred a month?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, I mean, a council discussion. Minimal, a paper I. Close.
Quick question, how does that affect the budget, the town's budget?
Six thousand dollars split out of water sewer and the city, so it's two thousand dollars out of water, two thousand dollars sewer, two thousand out of general.
And we normally budget in those, we budget a little high on the law fees anyways, so it doesn't really, it's not gonna affect the budgeting, because we normally budget what the lawyer costs, but we always budget that ninety dollars an hour too, if we have to get in any, so that money's always sitting there, getting carried over year to year to year, so there is a problem, and we, let's just say we do have a contractor on a water job, and then we gotta get this legal battle, which we come close on a couple of those contract jobs, where they didn't fulfill the contract, and we've had to bring legal in, because we always kind of tap those water sewer and town.
We also budget to allow for potentially jury trials and stuff, where there would be more time that they would have to be paid for. So that's already pre-budgeted in our budget, if you look at it, I don't, it's not budgeted at twelve thousand dollars, it's budgeted at like eighteen thousand dollars, with some room in there for that other kind of stuff. That's a made, completely made up number, the eighteen, by the way, the twelve is the base, so.
Well, we do, we add always a little cushion there, so you're not right at that, so we do have some trials, or we do have some legal work, and so there's. Next item is payout for still water electric. Still water electric, the blowwork building, this is the final payout for them, eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. This is the final payout on the original project, there will still be payouts on the added work.
So that, the second line on the back page or the change orders, that isn't the actual work? We've talked about, so that's the.
Change order at the blower building, so I don't think we're into the change order at the lift station yet.
Right, the change order at the blower building is we put in an extra blower or something.
And a fan.
Yeah, 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 this has, this is the work that's already done just at the blower building, at the lift station.
So the second change order, which is at the lift station, with heaters, movers, vent fan, and some other electrical upgrades out there is not, that's a separate piece.
That's twenty-seven thousand dollars, I think, off the top of my head, so that's gonna be it.
I was saying, just the heaters are worth eight thousand dollars, the lift station. They had to be explosion-proof out there, so.
Explosion-proof, or explor-?
Explosion-proof, yeah, so, because, because out there at the lift station, the fumes would come out of the holes, so you have hydroxyl fight could be coming out, so everything out there in that building has to be explosion-proof.
So the amount is eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. But, so you say, at the lift station, there could be more.
It is, it's over twenty thousand dollars out there, probably.
Over there.
You're not a.
We're not gonna look at that, because we haven't been billed for it, so.
Okay.
This is just the final payout at the.
For the blower.
At the blower project.
Okay, I make a motion, we pay still water electric, what created eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents.
I'll say, motion made second, all paper I, opposed.
Can I hold it, please, stop, I'm sorry, they're actually getting paid eight thousand six hundred fifty-six twenty-nine. One percent is getting held out for taxes, but just, if you're gonna specifically state the amount, it's the eight thousand six hundred fifty-six twenty-nine.
Well, we're looking at this, right?
They're gonna hold out, though.
Yeah, there's a, so one percent gross tax, we see.
So, you gotta come back here, so you gotta state values, you gotta state that value, because we have to hold out the taxes, so.
Okay.
So the eight thousand six hundred fifty-six twenty-nine.
I'll amend my proposal to eight, eight thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
And then we have to hold out the eighty-six dollar fifty-six cents, and send them to state. Okay, do I have a second on the divina?
I'll second it.
Any other discussions? All paper I.
I.
Close. Next item is a variance application. The variance request for a fence at Ramona's place, three thirteen Michelle Street. She wants to change the height of the fence, she wants to put a eight-foot fence on two-foot pillars. Height variance needed for fence to achieve visual privacy and help prevent trespassing. Proposed setbacks, one foot, one inch at each, one inch at one section to the proposed fence. According to special circumstances, yes, I'm also requesting to set fence up on concrete pillars, two feet high, because it sits on the floodplain, so I can provide maintenance of the lawn underneath it, and for the water to flow underneath that freely, so it's not affected by flow. Is a variance necessary? Yes. The reason for this is her neighbor's property actually sits up higher, and allows a line of sight from their windows into hers, that's why she's asking the extra height fence. Her property sits down low, their property sits up high, the fence is, doing this, puts the fence up high enough, they can't look out their windows into her yard. Will the variance be detrimental to the public? No. It's your own good, fences make good neighbors. Does the variance adversely affect the town's growth policies? No. Is the variance requested, minimum variance that will alleviate hardship? Yes.
The Jason property owner is also here, and Ramona is here, and here is a picture of the property.
Ramona, do you think to add to what I said?
Yeah, I do, so, well, the.
Walk up there.
Any point? Still scratching.
Okay, so right here, this was when there was this problem really, and when they, when the other owners broke up the entire property, it really was weird, and so it just, like the neighbors were like, "You can..." And so, it just, like, the neighbors were like, "You can jam in a top job." And so that's become a problem. Still for privacy, like, you can look right in my bedroom, and just into the yard, and south. Yeah, it's just become a problem, and because it's in, in a prone flood zone, I want to put up the pillars.
Can you point to where the other house is?
There's a house, yeah, there's a house right here.
In the trees, there's the trouble.
There's the other house right here.
She can't see it in the trees, but there's the other option.
And so, right here is the proposed one inch, I'm trying to keep everything just on my side. And, so I'm gonna put a fence like right here, right here, and then here. And it's just been a problem in the past, and so, I just really want to, whoever, if they should sell it, and so whoever, I just wanna, it's just too much. So, other questions? Two, please, help.
Counsel, any questions from the lawn?
Well, so an eight-foot fence, but does that make it ten feet with the two-foot pillars?
It will be ten feet with the two-foot pillar, so it also has a retaining wall, so that's makes the property sit up. So if I have a two, it's, I think it's a two or a three-foot retaining wall, so putting up a six-foot fence is nothing. Because it's already sitting up, so if I have the two-foot pillar, then I can maintain my side of the property. And underneath, and it'll also keep from ruining the fence for now, when the water gets in there, and then it'll add the fence up. So that, it serves the purpose of a fence, because otherwise we just like looking over the fence and.
So you were pointing out several locations of fencing.
Right here is where I'm requesting the pillars, the two-foot pillars. Because right here, because right in here is where the retaining wall is, and the retaining wall is about this high.
It's already there.
It's already there, and so when they broke this up, it was so weird the way they broke it up. And so, it's kind of sort of on my property, or it would seem to be, but it's not.
So in a sense, the house sits on a hill, so the house sits on a hill, looks down over the top of hers, on a, a small hill.
So the, the last owner of this property broke it up into two pieces and sold it up in two ways, instead of selling the property as a whole.
So those, those lots sit in there, those lots actually run north and south. So, the street, Second Avenue South comes up and goes up the hill. Karen Evans would be on the south side of it, just for reference, that's Second Avenue South, so those lots are supposed to sit and run at a north-south angle. What happened then is when the other property owner owned that, he ended up owning all of it, but he wanted to sell the little house off separately. So that's why he thought it made those type of lots half.
And so the little house, now, the little house sits up?
Yeah, so still below, you know, Karen sits up, the road, then he dropped down a vein for this little house, and he dropped down a vein, and then you're, now it's kind of a hole. So that lower part's actually lower than the street by almost four feet, it's quite a ways lower there, because you're coming off that hill. So where her property pins are, the retaining wall is kind of in the middle of that, so you can't like put the fence on top of retaining wall, because it's on her property, so I mean, it's, pins are almost to the retaining.
I thought Karen's was on the other side.
She is, I was just around where this is.
Okay, because I know where Karen, she's up high, and I know where that little house is, there.
Yep, and then it drops down again, down into her hole, so it drops.
So the house behind is yours, Ramona.
This is my house, and this is Annie's house.
Right.
And this is my property here, and this is hers.
So the pillars are not going to be on top of the retaining wall?
No.
No, they're gonna be down on the ground.
Because the retaining wall is, to a point, let's just say it's not on her property.
The retaining wall is on Annie's property.
So she has to raise it up to put the fence on top, so she's not.
Oh, it's Annie's property.
It is, the retaining wall is, yeah, it just, it was like this, it was really weird.
Annie's house is up here, the retaining wall is here, she wants to put the fence down here.
Because that's where the property starts, down the bottom, retaining.
You know, I don't have any issues about this, but the question I do have is, you keep having these requests for variances to make eight-foot fence. So then it made me think, why do we have ordinances if we just continuously approve variances? And then the other thing is variance or the ordinances should be about health and safety, and why does a fence height have anything to do with health and safety?
That's a word's place, yeah.
I mean, I think, though, I mean, for our little town, we have an extreme number of ordinances for such a tiny town, and I, and I know what I was in that class, that every five years we're supposed to review them. So just on top of this, when are we up reviewing our ordinances?
In two years. That's what, I mean, we need to.
I did, yeah, and it just seems as we do, like, we need to redo this.
Actually, Sean and I found one we need to redo too.
I mean, we just keep having these variances, it's like, well, maybe it's time to rethink a lot of these.
Well, and the fence one, it just, the fence one, the reason for the eight-foot, when you start getting to be an eight-foot fence, you have to take a lot more into consideration and build it. That's, that's why I'd be, when the people, when they redid it and they suggested six-foot. Six-foot, bury the posts in the ground normally, and a normal person doing it, you're okay, for solid wood pins. You eight feet, just an extra two feet gets that height up there, if you don't bury them right, then it pushes over and lands on the neighbor's car, whatever, which actually happened on Central, that's what.
Well, then I guess that should be part, because we've approved several eight-foot fences, but we haven't had any requirement that they put the posts in deeper. So if we're gonna do that, then we should be following that.
And one of the things you can look at is, we still have an eight-foot fence, but then we just need to be careful on, at corners, intersections like that, that, where this is not even on the street, it's not even.
Where, I, I'm just talking about in, in general, I think it's, I just got to thinking, it's like, since I've been on council, I can't remember how many times we've approved variances for an eight-foot fence.
And the houses are so close that I've had a lot of people there.
Yes, I mean, I have no issue with it.
It works, you know, some on some, and so I've got people coming on my property all the time, because it looks as though it would all belong together, because initially it was. But it's not anymore, and now it's a problem, so now I'm just trying to correct it, I have a fact.
Okay, you're the property organ, you have any questions?
I have no problem with that.
Anyone else have anything?
Just like a real quick on the, the property in long portion capacity, and I don't know if this does it justice, but investigating the issue that was over there. You know, okay, let's, let's see where the property boundary is, and it's so elevated to where Ramona mentioned that you can touch your neighbor, she wasn't kidding, the property, climb four feet up, and the TV is a person. You know, this would be lawful for me to be standing right here on this property, staring and touching this person. So it is definitely very unique, and with the instances that the police department has dealt with over there, I think the right of the person, not just the individual privacy, but protection from our investigations, there is absolutely warranted. So, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you. You're leaving, stop the meeting, can't talk.
Well.
We can't talk.
We can't talk. Hold on just a second, I don't know why I stopped.
That's fine.
The recording stopped until the recording comes back on. Lost satellite TV. If I have nothing to do with meeting, I'm gonna head out. I'm gonna drop a stack of cards with teeth.
Record progress.
Okay, do you have any questions, comments, concerns, regarding Tuesday game? Thank you, thank you for coming over, we'll see you tomorrow. You will see us tomorrow. Okay, all right, Leslie, you got a question back to the fence with that?
Well, I'm just reiterating that Annie doesn't mind this variance, and she's the neighbor. And so, and we've had two cases recently with eight-foot fences, and we approved both of those. And normally it's eight feet, but if there's, there's a good reason for it, then we have been approving those eight-foot fences. And so, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the eight-foot fence with the two-foot pillars.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made second, the other council discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item request, the plant a tree in right-of-way, Mike Gettys, lives on A Street, and on the A Street condos. Mike, I'm putting in a request beyond the agenda here, I'd like to plant a, one Aspen tree in the public right-of-way, in front of my porch at four thirteen A Street, cabin number ten. It would be a two feet back and a, and one feet over from an existing elm stump in the map. Won't affect anything, there's no sewer or water lines right in that area, they're actually out in the middle of the street, the water line is, yeah, so we capture stormwater, drain, prove quality of life. So, there's an old existing stump, it's actually out a little further, he wants to plant the tree a little closer to the property, but is in the town right-of-way. And, Mike, you got anything else to add?
No.
Okay, and then just, the council just, when I was, Mike turned this in, I was reading it while I was having a meeting with the attorney. And the attorney advised, we shouldn't be doing anything in the right of, the right ways, need to stay open. But, that's just, this is kind of one liner, we didn't have any discussion on it, with all this, just, all this reading that around. Right-of-ways are normally, that's been one of the legal things coming down over the years, last, it's more and more and more, right-of-ways to be kept open for different things. This is right on the edge, one of the things that's leading to A Street and the condos is, how far is your porch off the property line, Mike, like two feet, three feet? I mean, it's, they're, I mean, they're right up close to that, right up close to the edge of the street, I mean, there, you know, so. So that, that's why he's here, because he was, will be planting it in the city right-of-way.
If I leave, if I plant it on the line or a little closer to the porch, it'll just grow into the eve of my porch root. So it really needs to be where I wanna put it to make it healthy and.
Well, I think having trees in town to beautify it, and considering there's already trees all over town in the right-of-way.
We also have the liability of the trees in the right-of-way, that when a branch breaks, it's a problem, somebody's paying for it.
Or a car, or whatever, it's, that was, that was the, that's been the big thing with right-of-ways, and of course, with, times have changed, you know, over and over and over, that's, so, so those things are creating up more and more. Any like power company, some talks about that along, because the power lines, I believe, are the other side of the street, Mike, so they, they're us. The power lines?
They're in the backyard.
At the back, okay, that'll be out. It's that kind of, they are a different spot, those, so there are some dis liabilities to that.
Did Mike have to do a bunch of work down there on First Avenue South on the tree that was in the right-of-way?
We've had, actually, we had a lot of right-of-way issued trees, and, and one of the things in town is falling down, and it is also trimming up and keeping it healthy too. But yeah, those little things we have problems with. Whether it's nice, healthy, small, you know, one thing, the, the trees are old, they get brittle, and start to fall. Yeah, we just dealt with the apples the other day, and I believe we took one out in Simms, right? With a fir tree.
Can I add?
Yes, Mike.
You know, the old trees they planted were too large, the Siberian, Siberian elms and a lot of black locusts. We've got so many species now, and, you know, I think there's a lot more options now, and we have so much more education on like right tree for the right place. And I think there's a lot of spots where like even more like grasses, ornamental, like a bio swale or infiltration garden. Towns are doing it everywhere, even Poulsen, so, I mean, I get that there's not room for trees everywhere in the right, right-of-way. But this spot, I think, at Aspen is a medium-sized tree, would, I don't think it would cause any problems.
I think, look at Missoula, all the trees along the pull hard, they're all in the right-of-ways.
When a storm went through Missoula and the trees were falling over, I mean, that was a really big problem.
Yeah, but that was a once in a, how many years of that storm? Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the request for and replace a medium-sized Aspen tree on the right-of-way.
Motion made second.
I'll second.
Motion made second, the other council discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes. I haven't been here forever, I just moved to the neighborhood. I wanna talk tonight about the fundraiser for the food bank, our local food bank that I'm putting on. And I have Brock on my telephone now, so I put in particulars in there, so I'm gonna read it.
Excuse me, what's your name first?
Deanna Peters.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just moved here. So, good evening, everybody, I'm here to share exciting news about a community event to support our local food bank on Saturday, October eleventh at one P M. We will host a food bank benefit at Lone Pine Hall in Lone Pine, Montana. The event will feature a delicious meal of pulled pork sandwiches, coleslaw, baked beans, and a dessert, all for fifteen dollars per person, and plus a bottle of water or a cup of coffee. In addition, we will hold a silent auction, offering a variety of items for bidding. All proceeds from both the meal and the silent auction will go directly to supporting our local food bank, helping to provide essential resources to those in need in our community, which is a lot this year. We are also thrilled to announce that TownPumps in Plains, Montana has generously agreed to match the funds we raised up to a total of twenty-five hundred dollars. This matching contribution will significantly amplify the impact of every dollar we collect, making this event a vital opportunity to strengthen our food bank's efforts. We invite everyone to join us for the meaningful afternoon of good food, community spirit, and giving. Thank you for your time and support, and we hope to see you all at Lone Pine Hall on October eleventh at one o'clock. Thank you.
Deanna, just to clarify for everyone, everyone sees the food bank truck come in and delivers food and stuff, so the food bank needs money for, can you explain what they need the money for?
Well, what they do is, what I found out is that our local food bank has to buy the food. It isn't a truck that just comes in and drops off free food.
Well, I think they buy, they buy like, do they go to like Bucks and buy like milk, and there's some, and they buy some stuff they buy.
They buy from the food bank network, so they do get, I wonder, the discount, the food bank network buys it in bulk, and then local food banks buy from them. But she also goes to Poulsen to get the milk and eggs and things like that.
She does that, and I'm just, I'm doing the fundraiser this year, I sold the Creekside, so my son said I wasn't allowed to buy another business. So he said I start, I start donating my time, and they don't do the soup kitchen in Poulsen anymore. So, but anyway, you guys, I went down there and seeing the shelves after the first of the month, when everybody can go down there, they're bare after the first of the month. We have, there's a young lady here who brings in food to the park, that gives to our community and stuff, so, but we really need it. So, just coming and supporting the benefit would be really great, I got some really cool auction items and stuff like that going there and stuff, so. But it would be great if you guys could support, and thank you for all the donations that have already come in, it's phenomenal, so, thank you. But it would be great if you guys could support it, and thank you for all the donations that have already come in. It's phenomenal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Deanna, with that, where do you get the auction items to? Where would you drop them off if you want?
You can drop them off at the Creekside. It's this Saturday. So, or you could call me. I have the flyers. There's a GoFundMe page on Facebook, and then I have the flyers been out there. And then if you write a check, it's to the Hot Springs Food Pantry, and Janet Brass is the treasurer for the food bank, so.
So, but we could, I, because I told them I would donate amiorizing some of my products, so take it to the Creekside?
Yes, please. And get this, the tribe donated five hundred dollars, and they will donate five hundred dollars every year to our food bank. And Mission Valley Power already does turkeys every year for Thanksgiving. So it's great, yeah, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys have a great night.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items, variant?
Yeah, okay. About the variance, you know, it's, it's easy to feel good about a variance like this, when it's like a windmill situation. I still have mixed feelings about the eight-foot fence that was the last variance request, because it was a windmill situation, especially for a senior salesman who's been here for decades and worked as a, as a design. She lost her view of the mountain. She had bought this property. And, and on the other woman's side, she had a view that wasn't very, that was kind of disturbing, and it probably also had some comings and goings, okay. But it seemed to me that it had been a couple of years that city kept bringing up, we're gonna do something about this, something's gonna be done about this, but it wasn't. And so that, that I saw was still there, and so what she gonna do, but then, about then, somebody loses and somebody wins. And so that one, I feel kind of, just a little bit, like, a little bit conflicting, but about how that came about that. You know, there had to be somebody that was in distress because she lost her view, devalued her property, and she just, you know, didn't see, I guess she didn't see that coming. So I just wanted to say how I felt doesn't matter, okay?
Just to add, the property owner's fence on the north side of her property is eight-foot high, and she does not have a variance for it. So, which come to light, which she came to the meeting and would measure it.
It wouldn't, would.
On her own property?
On her own property, which is here complaining about the neighbor building an eight-foot fence. The lady, the neighbor was complaining about the eight-foot fence.
To Xander, the property she bought.
She has, she has an eight-foot fence on her property that does not have a variance for it.
That she, was it there when she bought it?
I don't, I didn't research it that far.
I mean, I guess that would be, that would, might have already been there when she bought it.
So, that was just.
But the other ones, when the people brought the property and had the eyesore, she was there when she bought the property, so they knew it was there.
Any other public comment?
But I think going through the ordinances and variances, I think it's time.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I do. I just, I shouldn't undermine. I actually have talked to the contractor, and we are setting a date for after the sixteenth to complete that abatement.
Oh, for that?
He's giving me a date that works with his schedule, but we're setting the exact date that they're going to show up, and it's sometime after the fifteenth, the sixteenth, after the sixteenth.
So that's actually been finally finalized.
Okay. I actually have one more thing, and I should probably should register in the police report, but it's just a public comment from Lisa Beersley, through a letter to me. Officer Larson during the spring and summer of twenty twenty-five has been extremely helpful to me on numerous occasions. Dirt alley north of Main Street, in Delphal, in this, with, which Officer Larson was helpful. These incidents included mentally ill man who was trespassing on my property and doing things that made me feel unsafe. Another drunken individual in the alley sat down and persisted on making insults, remarks, or another disabled man from the rude relations center spent hours sitting across the alley, watching me in my yard. Homeless man was living in a car across the alley from me. There has been a lot of out-of-control drunken parties over the summer at a residence at the end of the alley. Officer Larson desperately helped in all these situations. If I got to the point, or a couple of months ago, that I no longer felt safe living in Hot Springs, actually, she owns the residence that she's living in. And put my house on the market and leave town because of Officer Larson's help with these incidents, his professionalism and ability to communicate with care. I no longer feel I need to leave. Officer Larson has done a great job to make it safe for me to be here. You're welcome to contact me in the details. Lisa Beersley and also her friend, Richard Dillaw, will. Set up a relay to the council. Any other public comment? Hearing none, motion adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All favor eye.
Aye.
Thank you.